Seven o'clock, Monday, September 16th, 2019. I call the regular meeting of Waverly City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Kengis.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Raffi.
Here.
Cher.
Present.
Lawson.
Here.
And Bergen is absent.
Councilperson Bergen is absent, but we welcome back our guest councilperson, Lynn Gents from Pizza Ranch. Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
The same rules still apply, so don't be afraid. I would also like to welcome our guests in the audience, and it looks like we have maybe a scout troop or two that has some homework to do.
Yeah.
Which troops are you all from?
Oh, are we talking about me? I am from...oh, we have this society, yes, yes. So family into the science.
Okay.
Troop 90.
Troop 90, very good. All the scouts are from Troop 90?
Yes.
Very good, welcome. We hope we won't make it too interesting for you, but we'll give you a good council meeting. Do you entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any council discussion, comments? All those in favor of the agenda as presented, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are...agenda is approved. Next item is approve the minutes of the August 20...corrected minutes of the August 26, 2019 study session. Do you entertain a motion?
I move the approval of the corrected version of the minutes for August 26.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is public comments for any item that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by a single-voiced vote without...unless someone from the council or the public requests the specific item be considered separately. Pay requests from WHKS and Company for the East Bremer Avenue Sanitary Sewer Extension 2019 for the amount of $12,843.96. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the Business 218 North Resurfacing 2020 for the amount of $17,963.38. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 for the amount of $472.89. A Class C liquor license for the other place, too. A Class B native wine permit for Meyer Pharmacy and the cash disbursements for August 2019. Do you entertain a motion?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent calendar, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Consent calendar is hereby approved. Regular business item number one, Resolution 19-147, approving the area north of the soccer complex as a location for youth ball diamonds. Do you entertain a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-147 approving the area north of the soccer complex as a location for youth ball diamonds.
Your second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Bronner, if you'd lead to open the discussion.
Yes, sir, your honor. We've been meeting as a group for a number of weeks now, and as you recall, we were charged to look at the youth ball primarily, and we've had other discussions as well, but it's primarily on youth ball diamonds. As we move forward, discussing some pros and cons of a couple areas, the group came to the conclusion that they would prefer to move forward looking at this site. As you know, we will be presenting a formal report to the council at the end of October in that study session. So in effort to have a more complete report, to have cost estimates, to look at possible firms for grading plan, drainage issues, et cetera, everything, of course, has to come before you before we move forward with anything substantial, and so we felt it was important to identify this area, then have permission from the council to move forward, to gather those items for that final report in October from the commission itself.
Okay, very good. Council discussion.
James, were there any...was there any downside that the commission saw to this recommendation?
Not that I can tell. I mean, we have a number of commission members here, if they would want to speak or address it as well, but when we're looking at the items that we need to move forward with, part of it is we still have to gather some of that information, you know, whether it be financial or...we've been looking at inundation mapping with engineer to see water area issues, which are going to appear to be in a lot of those spots that we're, you know, taking a look at. So a lot of this is still fact-finding as we move forward, and we're just wanting additional permission to do so before we get too much further into spending the time to go that much deeper on that site.
I've been able to attend most of the meetings, and I'm impressed with the task force. They are thoughtful but determined to get youth ball diamonds finished in a timely fashion, and it might be helpful if Jeremy Langner or Chuck Britton commented on the work of the commission so far, and they might be able to...he may be able to speak better to the pros and cons.
Thank you, guys. Jeremy Langner, the chair of the task force. So I sent you guys a letter this past week in terms of where we're currently at with our conversation, and in that letter I spoke specifically to us considering the two pieces of land that we discussed in our meetings. In those conversations, we came to the conclusion that we would be the...that we would decide on those two pieces of land because that's what the city provided us with what they currently owned for land. We don't see our task as finding more pieces of land unless the city says, here's a piece of land to consider. So understand that's where we're currently at. We've been clear with the city that the city is the lead on this project. We want the city to be the lead on the completion of this project and taking it on. So in conversations with James, with Bill, with Ann, with our task force, a lot of it does come down to the financial piece and what is going to be financially supported. We don't know that. That's hard for us to determine that because we don't know what those numbers are.
Other questions, comments?
If you unwind the last 10, 12 years of discussion around ball diamonds, that type of thing, this was a parcel that was purchased by the city with the intentions of youth ball diamonds. A prior park and rec-type commission group brought forward a plan for that, and it had a lot of neighbor resistance to it. Have we gauged what their...how receptive they may be this time around, given that the Parkway has been finished, some of the issues that may have been part of the original proposal have kind of gone away or changed?
Yeah, so in our conversations, we just discussed at the last meeting that the city would take the lead on getting that feedback. Again, we've been really clear and focused on what land is available, and if there was a rendering for that site, what would it look like and how would it meet our needs? So again, we try to stay really focused on what could be provided on that site. So there's additional work there to determine what that feedback would be.
I've only heard personally from one neighbor, and they had two concerns. One would be drainage of the area, which, like James said, I think will be found out in this next stage. The other was lighting, and certainly the commission has talked about that, what is at other community fields, and for this age group, at least to start with, we've talked about how lighting might not be required, but I haven't heard other concerns so far from the neighbors.
I guess I'm a little confused as to what exactly it is that we're voting on here tonight, when it's...the resolution says to approve the area north of the soccer complex. What does that mean? Does that mean that we are giving you the green light to build ball diamonds there? Does that mean that we are giving you the green light to go further with spending money for engineering studies? Are we saying that we want you to focus in on that particular piece of ground as opposed to any other ground you might potentially look at?
I think it's the green light to move forward, a little deeper into what we've been discussing since we've been trying to figure out what we could and couldn't do, and then also not necessarily to spend funding, but to, again, prepare that report for you in October to eventually spend funding on this. You know, we were looking to get some advice, some clarity from different engineering firms that may be dealing this as a specialty, or we looked at another configuration and diamond layouts that we're trying to look at. Is that possible? Some of that will be determined by the grading plan that has to occur, how efficient is it? And so a lot of it was kind of...we'd heard the council wanting kind of an update.
Right.
So this was sort of a brief mid-level update as well before we get to October. We're about, I guess, about almost halfway there, and so it was to answer any questions you may have to this point and to get a...get a positive affirmation to go forward and continue working on this particular site.
Okay, because when we started with this commission, I made a list of four or five concerns that I had or questions that I had that I wanted to have answered before we made a final decision on what site we were going to hook our...what site we were going to basically use, what site we were going to get behind. And one of those, of course, is the financial aspects of this, and I've heard from a number of people and from some of the conversations we've had that the...using the site by the soccer field is going to be much less expensive, and that makes some sense because there isn't going to be nearly as much dirt that has to be moved. There are some other concerns such as, you know, is there enough room there to have all of the ball diamonds that we want? And, you know, things like drainage and that. I guess I'm not ready at this point to make a final vote saying, yes, we are going to have all of our diamonds built in this location, or no, we're going to have all of our diamonds built in some other location. Is that a fair assessment of where we're at?
Well, the resolution discusses youth ball diamonds only. This is not applying to adult ball diamonds or the teenager ball diamonds, and so I think that what the commission is looking for is some sort of go-ahead from the council because if we're going to explore costs for this project, whether it's feasible, there's more work that needs to be done. If we can't get a go-ahead from the council, we're stalled.
I don't have any problem with going ahead with a feasibility study, looking at this more carefully and seeing what the costs are, what the engineering is, what we actually can do in this location. I don't have any problem with anything that's absolutely necessary, and I think that that's appropriate for the city to find funds that we can earmark for doing those kinds of things if that's what's necessary for us to make a decision. I'm not ready tonight to make a final vote that says, yes, we are going to build ball diamonds on that location. I don't think we have enough information yet to be able to make that decision.
So is there wording that you would prefer in the resolution?
Well, I'm concerned about the...I'll find my copy of the resolution here again.
I mean, we could...we could look at changing the last line of it to approve feasibility study or engineering. I don't know the right wording, James. I would leave that up to you, but to see whether it's a...
Well, and we're not asking for a final vote. I mean, that'll happen after October when you have your final report. This is more of a halfway point. We're just being cautious. We move forward, not going too far out in front of where council wants us to be. I think that's a lot of it, considering the history of this, as Dan has brought up. We don't want to run too fast with this, and we want to be cautious and make sure you're aware of kind of where we're at, where we're leaning, what we're trying to accomplish. So I think we're about halfway there. It's...we want to get, again, up to speed to make sure we go the other half, to get your final report in October when we look for a final vote, but not today.
And we have seen...we have seen possible plans, site plans, for how many ball diamonds could fit, and we've got representatives from the various leagues that are pleased with the plans so far, but there's some tweaking that needs to be done. So I do think it's feasible.
Well, my concern here is I make a career out of making words say things that they don't say, so you need to be very precise in how you're wording things.
Sure.
And I would rather see something along the lines that the city of Waverly, Iowa, has hereby approved additional...or approve the concept of the area north of the soccer field as a location for youth ball diamonds and, you know, proceeding with further study or something like that. But because when it says that we hereby approve the area north of the soccer complex...
Sounds final.
To me, that sounds more final.
Sure.
And I'm not ready to make that final determination.
Sure.
I would even maybe add in there, instead of as the location, maybe say as the preferred location, just kind of as a...this is where we would prefer to go, but if things come back that it's not feasible with whatever idea comes up, we start.
We need to see how much it costs.
And I want to see the final report.
Sure.
I want to see the final report. I want to see what the layouts look like. I want to be shown that we can actually get the youth ball diamonds in there. I want some discussion about, okay, if we're only going to do the youth diamonds there, what's going to happen to the rest of it? And I know there's been discussion about that, but I want that out to the public.
That's what the commission wants, too. That's why they're here.
We want to give you all that, Rod.
I think we're all on the same page. I'm just freaking out about the word approve.
I'm not freaking out about it, but I have...
Don't panic.
But I have the same opinion.
You've seen the whole soft opening? This is like a soft affirmation, wanting a gently move forward type of thing. This is not by any means a final anything. When they have a report drafted, we don't expect anything final until that report's there. You've reviewed it. That's even in the study session, so it'd be first meeting November for it could be even approved to move forward, something like that.
There was some discussion in the press about the vote tonight was going to be a final vote on where the ball diamonds would be located.
I can't help but the press press.
Yeah, misinformation.
But I understand that, but that's the impression...
Because it always is, yeah.
That's the impression that was left with a lot of citizens, and I want to make sure that the citizens understand that tonight is not a final vote.
It is not.
It is a vote to tell the commission that we want you to proceed with what you're doing, if you think you're on the right track.
Correct.
But before there's a final vote, I want to see the comparisons. I want to see the advantages and disadvantages of the two sites you're looking at, which I know you've discussed. You know, take a look at what the money, how much, you know, what we're looking at there, timelines perhaps.
Well, the pros and cons of the sites are in the minutes of the commission.
Yeah.
You know.
No, that'll come in the report, too.
And that'll come in the report.
Yeah. Not everyone sees the...
I can see why it's...is why the public might be a little confused on it, too, because the title of the resolution says approving the location, and so, yeah, I think a little clarity on that, just to say if we want to move forward, we're getting the details of it.
But both sites, this site north of soccer complex and the quote Champions Ridge site, has been...was discussed thoroughly
Right.
in the task...with the task force, and this is the preferred site that came out, so.
So we will not be studying the other site.
Right. That's already really been done.
Yes.
Correct.
Well, that's my concern with using approving in the opening to this and hereby approving the area. To me, we're supporting the continued work here, but it's already been acknowledged that Champions Ridge is an alternative, and there is still a very dedicated group of people that are trying to make that happen. Again, I know the council has said it's time to move on, but again, I would hate to have this worded in such a fashion that, number one, people feel we're approving a project that hasn't even been presented to us, and, two, that it further hinders another option that's being worked on.
Well, which is more confusing, right? Is it more confusing to pick a site and go with it as the commission was asked to do, and they have done unanimously, or is it confusing to say to the public, we are still weighing the pros and cons of two sites when the city commission that was appointed is not? They have made their decision. So I think if we need to change the wording of this, which I think is a good idea, to say that it's currently the preferred site of the commission, and we need to explore whether this is a feasible site based on engineering and costs.
No problem with that.
And we'll get plenty of time to discuss it, whether it's at a study session plus the voting session.
And I understand this is the preferred site of the commission, and I certainly trust their judgment, and I appreciate all the hard work they've done on this, but on the other hand, the final decision on this belongs to the council.
It does.
So I want them to provide all the information they can provide us so that we can confidently make that final decision.
So I just want it to be done competently and not at glacial speed
Yes.
so that it doesn't take another 14 years to see it accomplished.
I don't have a problem with approve, Dan, but I would say something like, the city council of the city of Waverly, Iowa, is hereby approve for further review, and we can get more specific if we want, but for further review, the area north of the soccer complex as a preferred location for youth ball diamonds. I'll make that...I'll make that motion as an amendment.
I didn't make the motion, so you'll have to get the...
Carla, can you repeat that?
Excuse me. The city council of the city of Waverly does hereby approve for further review the area north of the soccer complex, and then I missed...
As a preferred location for youth ball diamonds.
I think that makes pretty good sense. I'll second it.
Okay. For Ludis.
Again, I totally understand where the council is at on this and support looking at this. I wrestle with, and I've shared this, under the Champions Ridge project, the fundraising for it, the support for it was by the users. I just want to caution the city that by taking this turn and very pointedly, the commission putting it back on this council to drive this, we become the owners of it. We become the caretakers of it once it's built. There's going to be a financial commitment to build it. Again, I would hope there would be some partnering with the entities that will be using it, but it will become part of the city budget going forward and what hard choices are going to have to be made. So I understand upfront, there may be a sense that this is the cheaper route to get youth ball diamonds, but I just don't want us to be short-sighted in that. It may be cheaper to get it built, but I don't know that it will bring the dollars into the community, the Champions Ridge would, from an economic development standpoint. We still haven't addressed a third to a half of the people that play ball by this, the adults and the older youth. So I just want to be cautious if we turn this corner, that we understand what we're buying into.
We'll make sure it's in the report, though, Dan. We'll look at past, just building it. Obviously, cash flow going forward is something we'll have to consider, whether it's staffing needs or how does it compare to the diamonds we're currently taking care of? If they replace them or they addition to, all that'll have to be worked out. And so we've still got a lot to do with the end of October, but that is the goal, is to have it laid out for you as clear as possible.
I think if, Dan, if you go back and read the original development agreement, the city was committed to maintenance and things, not necessarily of the diamonds, but of the site at Champions Ridge. It was not a...it was not a one-sided deal by any means.
No, again, it was a four-pronged partnership, and I just wonder where other prongs of the partnership is if we go this direction.
Well, I think we have prongs on the commission, you know, that are going to be using these fields and are invested in some sort of partnership, public-private fundraising, as well as, to some degree, maintenance, so I think that can all be spelled out in the report and in future meetings, but I think the commission deserves an answer about whether the council supports their recommendation.
I would say, too, that it, for me at least, it's not just the cheapest alternative. It really is, how do we balance moving along expeditiously with being fiscally responsible? And if we can't do everything at once, what priorities do we have? So that's, you know, I don't think it's just a matter of this appears, and I wouldn't even be so bold now as to say it's cheaper. We don't have enough information, but I guess I would support the commission continuing their work, and I feel that that's what we would be doing in this resolution if we approve it. And I guess we're at this amendment now, but once we...once we get done with that, I have some other questions that aren't related to the wording.
Okay. They read, vote on the amendment, and then continue discussion. Carla, if you would read the amendment back, please.
The city council of the city of Waverly, Iowa, does hereby approve for further review the area north of the soccer complex as a preferred location for youth ball diamonds.
Very good.
Now, is that an amendment, or is that the actual...
No, that's the amendment. That's the amendment.
Has it voted on that piece of it?
Well, we never had a motion, so that...
I moved...oh, we never had an original motion.
We never had an original motion, so that motion, that actually was a motion.
But we did. We did. Raffi, Raffi moved, Cher, Cher.
Okay.
So you added the word preferred, and then you added a phrase at the beginning?
For further review.
For further review?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We had an original motion and seconded, and now we're on the amendment. All those in favor, say of the amendment, say yes.
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 Opposed? Okay, now we're back to discussion of the resolution.
Right. I have some questions about what you said about other properties apart from...apart from the direction from staff that you received, that you re-articulated now. Was there any conversation at all about any properties, city-owned or not, that mall people thought could be other possible properties?
Yeah, so when we looked at the original report, we noticed in the original report they had discussed, I think they had 16...many, 16 different things that they looked at. And so we initially wanted to say, okay, what can serve us and what can be there? And so we've just got really clear on the youth side of it, because I know the adult softball piece comes into it, but our task force by you, designed by the mayor and by the commit...by the council, is to look at the youth piece. And so all of our feedback has been, what is youth able to do on the property that we've been looking at? Yes.
Okay.
Again, if there are additional pieces of land that you want to acquire about, we're not...we're not going to advise on that because all of a sudden that changes the conversation about that price of land and what that land looks like, and is the city willing to do that? As you can see, we're trying to find a way to say, let's get something accomplished because with some transparency, this conversation started in 2007, and we all have acted with some urgency to try to find a way to support kids, to get them playing ball on adequate fields.
Mr. Britton, do you have comments you'd like to make?
I might add that you already have approval.
Say it for the public, state your name, please.
I'm not Charlie. I'm Chuck. My last name is Britton.
Thank you.
And I did this in 2007, stood right here and got my nose bloodied over this. So I think you already have approval, because the land was purchased for it. So in my mind, if you go back and look at the minutes, you probably already got approval. I have, in my mind, been involved in all of the projects. I think Champions Ridge is a wonderful spot, but we need to do something for our kids. In 2007, they're not better. What really sold me was, the other night, I'm going to tell you I went on 10th Avenue, but I turned right, so it's something else. As I went down 10th Avenue and came up the hill, going back, going all the way over to Highway 3, there were 31 people walking on the sidewalks across that piece of property. It's accessible. There won't be 31 people walk west of town in five years, and there were 31 people that night on my drive across town. It is important that we quit talking about all of this budget. Find the money. This is for our kids. I don't have any grandkids here. I got no axe to grind. I love the fair project. I think it is fabulous. But it isn't done. This needs to get done. I will not stand here again. It's too long. Get this done. And if we can't put in nine fields, then let's put in six or seven. We've got a beautiful opportunity to put in a miracle field for our handicapped. What a shame if we don't do this. Will the money come? Yep, it will. How's it going to come? Don't have the foggiest idea. Raise my taxes. Don't care. We got to do it for the kids. We got to quit talking about all that other ancillary stuff. This is for our kids. Our town is growing. I just heard how our school district's growing. Our kids get to play baseball for four years. Our kids get to be involved in the fair for 10. We got to get this done. Last time it was because people were worried about people would drive through the neighborhood. Well, I got people that drive through my neighborhood. Then it was, if 10th Avenue got done, then we could get this done. Well, now 10th Avenue's done. A fabulous spot. I think about baseball. What's the one thing I hate in April and May in Iowa? I hate the wind. So I'm going to play baseball. Where do I want to play out of the wind? Down there. Pretty windy out west. Love the location. Think it's great. But I'm thinking, how are we going to get 31 people there every night, walking across and by it? So it's my opinion. I get, you know, I get this phone call in the middle of the night. Somebody said, "Hey, would you be on this commission?" And I said, "Yeah," and I didn't realize what the commission was, so here I am again. But I, I've been, I've been involved in baseball since we moved here in 1983. I coached little league, I coached senior league, and I've watched nothing but things get taken away. When I first moved here and coached senior league, we played at Hurdle Field, didn't we, Rich?
Yeah.
And then they took Hurdle Field away from us, and they built, Warburg built us a field, beautiful. It was great. Never got a true bounce, but we had a good time. And we played over there where they throw shot putts now. And then Warburg needed that to throw shot putts. So we lost that field. It's time to step up. We find the money for lots of things. Let's find the money for our kids. Quit worrying about, quit worrying about all of, all of the adults that have all these issues. This is kids. It's time to do this. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Brenda Meyer. I am on the Champions Ridge Committee, the Executive Governing Committee. Just a couple of questions, more for public comment than anything. And you had said that you had done a comparison of the Champions Ridge site on the commission to the current site. Just wondering what source of information you all used to do that comparison, because I don't think anybody on our, our governing committee was called in. So what, what did you use for information to do that?
I personally used the information that was provided at previous council meetings.
Okay. Then the other, the other comment I would just like to make, and I think it's already been made, is just to be, be aware and be careful of, this project may appear cheaper, but you are getting a lot less for what the price take is out on Champions Ridge. Champions Ridge obviously involved a lot more than what this project would, would involve. So the old adage of you get what you pay for is probably going to be true with respect to what you get when this project is over with. And then I heard the word "expeditiously," and I also heard Mayor Soash say today that he thought these, these fields could be up and playable by 2022, and I don't think that that probably was an unreasonable expectation as of January 2019 for Champions Ridge either. So I don't know how expeditious it is, but I don't know that it's running at a hair's pace either.
Let me correct that statement, Brenda. I did say that on the radio. But conversations with Mr. Broner later in the morning, the timeline that, that we've tentatively set out is that we think we can be playing games on those diamonds in the spring of 2021, which is a year sooner. Now, grading, yes. There's going to be some grading need to be done. Right up front, preliminary estimate is $500,000. Way less. That does not include some infrastructure, which we don't have as much to put in as Champions Ridge would be, but even based on the grading figures of hours estimate, preliminary estimate against the figures that are in the financials that Greg Miller presented to the council, of 2.1 million. Now, if that's wrong, then we've been led down the wrong, we've been down, we're led down a path that's not true. But that's the facts that I have. I have these financials in my office that was presented to council, if you'd like to see them. And but we established this commission with an aggressive timeline, and I think we're on track.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't argue with the 2.1 million. I think that was in, and I think that goes with my statement of, we're talking more ground, we're talking more, more facilities and more things that would come out of the Champions Ridge project. So obviously, you scale that down to a smaller number of acres, you're going to have a less cost. So I don't agree, I don't disagree with the 2.1 million, but I also say it's the size of the project that dictates the cost. So that's all I have, unless somebody has questions for me.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else before we entertain a vote? Okay, back to the original motion.
The amended motion.
The amended motion now. The original motion is amended. Carla, can you give us a walkthrough on that?
Like, do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Okay. The, excuse me. So the actual motion, not what's going on the resolution, would probably read, "approving the preferred area north of the soccer complex as a, you want possible location?"
Oh, you mean the first sentence up there? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, the actual motion. What do you want the motion to be? We amended the resolution.
I see. As the preferred location. Well, can it match the amendment of that last sentence?
I mean, and quite honestly, any of you could just make a motion of how you want it to read, too.
I would move changing the title of the resolution to a resolution designating the area north of the soccer complex as the preferred location for youth ball diamonds.
I can't even hear you.
I would, "A resolution designating the area north of the soccer complex as the location for, as the preferred location for youth ball diamonds."
Second.
Okay. And I'll leave at 19-147.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Resolution 19-147, as amended, is hereby approved. 6001 absent. Moving on, resolution 19-139, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Iowa, Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, or INTERCOG, for technical services administration of the IEDA-funded CDVG rehabilitation program. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-139, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, INTERCOG, for technical services administration of the IEDA-funded CDVG rehabilitation program, contract number 19-HSG-023.
Second. Motion made. Second. Counsel, question?
So this looked very similar to last year. Is that correct, the last time we did this?
Actually, this is probably different, because we didn't get that point.
Well, right.
With the technical service contract.
Similar.
But it's the way they do those for all of the grants, and that's how they get paid from the grant itself. So.
And the fee?
Yeah, we actually have somebody here that can...
Oh, okay, for this comes out of the grant itself, even though we've put some matching funds into it?
Yes, I believe that is correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Rose Phillips from the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments. I'll be administering this project. This, this is more of a technical correction. I inherited this project, and looking through the, the application in 2018 that, that wasn't funded, it, it looked like the, the proposal that INTERCOG made for technical services and then the memorandum of understanding that the council authored the mayor to sign, it included $21,000 for, for our technical administrative services, $12,000 for what we call lead hazard carrying costs. So that includes doing initial inspections of homes for lead hazards, doing clearance testing once the work is done to make sure there are no lead hazards. What it didn't include was $12,000 to relocate families when lead hazard reduction work is going on. And that's not really a, a cost that's paid to INTERCOG for a service we provide. It's, it's a pass-through cost. So we have accounts with hotels. We book a hotel room for a family. We pay them a small stipend for meals and for the inconvenience. And, and so that, those funds were in the budget that you submitted to IEDA, that IEDA approved this time around, but they just, they just weren't in the original proposal. So from an accounting standpoint, it's just cleaner to have that in the contract for when it, for when we send you invoices that include those costs.
So there's no additional cost to what the proposal originally said?
No, that, that was always built, figured into the budget that you sent to IEDA when you applied for this grant.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Again, for the people at home, this is the area just northeast, kind of...
Northwest.
Northwest.
I'm sorry, northwest from Bremer to...
The railroad tracks approximately in there.
Some about fifth to, or fourth.
Oh.
It said north half of that.
North half of that, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Resolution 19-139, hereby approved. 6001 absent. Resolution 19-145, approving the 2020 census partnership. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-145, approving the 2020 census partnership.
Second.
Motion made. Second. I've asked Carla to, and to give us an overview of this and the companion resolution, which will be coming up, 19-146, so.
So the US Census has asked the city to have a, to, in order to start the campaign to promote the census and to get information out there that says, that kind of informs people just how important the census is. So they've asked the city to partner with the US Census, and so that's where the partnership comes in. Just as a, well, I shouldn't start out by saying also, the Census Committee has eight members of it, and so there's myself, Valerie, Bill, Paige Yoder, Isaac Peasley, and then we have Mariah Bergen, Dr. Mariah Bergen, and Lindsay Coleman from the library. Bergen is from Warburg. Coleman's from the library, and then we have LeAnn Hoffman, thank you, from the hospital, as far as part of the Census Committee goes. We will be making appearances at sporting events, different areas around town, things like that, passing out brochures and whatever propaganda we can come up with. You will, you will see commercials on TV that will probably get tiring. You'll see things in the mail, but it's just to, to say, hey, this really is important. The census generates money to, for grants, for different things in the, in the city, for streets and schools, the libraries, the homeless, low housing. It just does so much. So, for example, RUT tax dollars is determined by how many citizens we have in Iowa, and I believe it's like $124 per person that we get per year. Does that sound right, Mike? Okay. So anyway, that's just an example of why it's important if we are 200 people shy of, of what the accurate count is, then we miss out on that money. So it truly is important. And it's secret if people are undocumented, things like that. It's nothing, I mean, it's just a matter of getting the count. So.
Very good. Those results are, what, 70 years?
I'm sorry?
It's, what, 70 years after the census before they get released, the actual details?
Yeah, yes.
It's something like, I know genealogists get excited every time they get ready to release the census data from when it was before.
And there's, there's quite a penalty if you give out data, too. We had to sign confidentiality forms, and it's like $250,000 fine and so many years of imprisonment. So, I mean, and it's not just for us, it's for the census employees as well. It's, they take confidentiality very seriously.
Glad I didn't sign it.
We actually spent the last two years trying to make sure we had every address, residential address depicted on a map of the city so that, to help the census workers.
Carla, just one question. Is it appropriate for us to try to encourage Warburg students to be identified as residents, and is there some way that that can be done?
The census, US Census says that the Warburg students are Waverly residents, and yes, they will be.
So there will be some kind of a process or attempt to have them recorded on the census?
The US Census workers will go to Warburg, and they will get...
And there will be an attempt by Warburg to cooperate?
That is true. Attempt is probably the proper word.
How would, how would that work at Warburg? Are they going to go up and down the dormitory hallways, or is there a place you...
They don't, they don't get their grades unless they sign up for the census.
Is there a cost for this?
Pizza party.
There is not. There does not. In fact, the census will support the city with quite a bit of propaganda.
I still got analysis from 20 times.
I ask all of you for your help, too, in spreading the word that it is an important issue to, for everyone to take hold and participate in.
I think it's important to remember that, you know, Waverly is clearly a growing community, and it's, it is important to get everyone counted, because there is an economic impact, and the city has a stake in that. So I'm, I'm glad we're doing it. And I want to congratulate Carla on having rehabilitated the word propaganda now.
And incarceration.
I guess I would call it an information campaign.
Okay.
I only use that word in our census presentation.
Very good, Carla. Thank you for all that information.
I think the new terminology would be like promotional swag.
Other counsel comments discussion on resolution 19-145. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Cangis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wadstein.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 19-145, approving the 2020 census partnership, approved. 6001 absent. Companion to that is resolution 19-146, approving the creation of the 2020 City of Waverly Complete Count Committee. Entertain a motion. I would move approval of resolution 19-146, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any counsel discussion? And Carla covered the committee and the members. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wadstein.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Resolution 19-146, approved. 6001 absent. Third and final reading of ordinance 1065, an ordinance approving the policy statement, connection fee schedule, and the connection district plat for East Bremer Sanitary Sewer Extension 2019 project. Entertain a motion.
I move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1065, an ordinance approving the policy statement, connection fee schedule, and connection district plat for East Bremer Sanitary Sewer Extension 2019 project.
Second.
Motion made, second. Counsel discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wadstein.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Third and final reading of ordinance 1065 is hereby approved. 6001 absent. Second reading of ordinance 1066, amending the current Waverly TIF ordinance, 1060, in connection with the adoption of amendment number five to the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the second reading of ordinance 1066, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Was there a wrong number?
Oh, it's got 1066 and 1060. Oh, never mind. It amended that. I'm sorry.
Am I, am I good?
You're good.
My apologies.
All right.
I'll still second it.
Counsel discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Wadstein.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cangis.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 1066 is hereby approved. 6001 absent. Please, please just to report some boards and commissions. Finding zoning commission minutes from June 20th, 2019. Received into record. The monthly financials, August 2019. Received into record. Ball diamond task force minutes from August 19th, 2019. Received into record. Please just to staff comments.
I don't think we have any tonight, sir.
Counsel comments.
I would like to report on an interesting conversation I had over the weekend with a woman who lives in rural Tripoli and works at Kuna. So I couldn't resist asking her, are you using the parkway to get to work? She said, I am. I go at 7:00 in the morning. And she said, it is really slick. So I said, are you alone on the parkway? She said, no, we have a lot of folks on there, and a lot of people using the, the trail. She was surprised. 7:00 o'clock in the morning, people are on the trail. So just thought you'd be interested in knowing that.
Okay, any other counsel comments? Not sure if Richard J., that Kip LaDaghi pushed out Facebook about code red being replaced with a new alert system here in the community, and do we plan to promote that so folks re-register?
Especially since apparently some people thought it might be a hoax. I saw some of the comments on the Facebook page.
Chief Purcell has some comments to make to that.
I'm not, I know that Kip wanted to do an update based on some last incidences, just to show the importance of it, to, as a reminder, to sign up for Alert Iowa. Somehow, when it got put out, it was described as a new system that we were just changing. We changed from code red to Alert Iowa over five years ago, so it's not a new system. So if you made the change in the past, within five years, you're on Alert Iowa. But, so, but it doesn't hurt just to go and check it out. You can re-sign. I checked with Kip, and you don't double up, so there's no, you won't have two addresses in the system. So if people thought it was a new system, and they re-signed up again, it doesn't, it didn't hurt anything. So, but yeah, it is always a good reminder, if you're not getting notifications right now, and you want notifications, be sure to sign up for Alert Iowa. And there is a link on the Bremer County website.
Very good. Thank you.
I was just wondering about the progress of Cedar Lane. I know it's supposed to be closed through September 30th, but wondering if things are on schedule, behind schedule?
A little bit off schedule. But they're stringlining the next section of main line, and if not this week, it'll be first part of next week. And that's just a little bit of shoulder, curb and gutter, and doing some backfilling.
So is the completion date still realistic?
September 30th?
Yeah.
Probably not.
Okay. Well, I think that would be good for people to know, yeah.
Still a couple of weeks away.
Yeah.
Kind of see how progress goes next week, and then we'll kind of reassess it, what the schedule is. We have a progress meeting with the contractor tomorrow, and we'll know more then.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Only comment I have for Chief Purcell, he received an email today concerning an intersection at West Bremer. If you would take that under, under your wing and look at it.
Yeah, pass it on to second shift so they can monitor it.
Okay, very good.
I'll, I'll just add, I, I saw that, too, of course. But I'll just add that it, that isn't the first, you know, citizen's comment that we've had over the years. I mean, it's not like you get one every day or every week even, but it is an intersection that I hear from, from my constituents about periodically. So just to add that it's more than one person, I guess, who's noticing that.
Okay. On that, I have no other comments.
For the minutes, it was the intersection of West Bremer and.
20th.
People running the stop sign.
And take a look at the lighting also, because that was mentioned. I did look at it this afternoon, and there is one, only one street light there.
Oh, I think she meant.
Like a flash.
I think she meant like the stoplight.
More traffic.
Traffic light. Maybe, maybe I read it wrong, but that's what I understood her to say, and that's what I've heard in the past. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I don't know enough about it. I do believe it's a, it's an intersection to take a look at. I don't know what the solution is, but.
As, as having a business at that intersection, I have witnessed that multiple times myself, people blowing through that, whether it's they're distracted and don't see the stop signs. I'm not sure what it is, but that is an intersection to be cautious about.
Very good. Thank you. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
We adjourn?
Second.
Motion made, second. All those in favor of adjournment, say yes. Yes. We are adjourned.